We have no microphones because Joe's not here. What they on?
We stand, we pray.
Complete divisions by the United States of America. And the three bodies for which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and every being just for all.
I'd like to know if we could all stand for a moment of silence for our today since we're celebrating Veterans Day today. And we have a very nice parade and speaker. Thank you. Mr. Scipora?
Here.
Mr. Jim?
Here.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Here.
Mr. Scipora? Mr. Baldmarry?
Here.
Mr. Forish?
Here.
Mayor Griffin, present? Six present. Thank you. May I have approval of minutes from the October 8, 2012 meeting, please?
Madam Mayor, I move the minutes to the October 8, 2012 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they'll be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second?
Oh, second, yeah.
May I give all favor?
Aye.
On opposed, motion carried. Thank you. They have approval of fiscal department reports and paid bills from the month of October 2012, may I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Wolfert, second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldmarry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Citizens request the comments.
Thank you. My name is Don Greiner. My address is 1809 Philadelphia Avenue, Northern Camry, Pennsylvania. I'm here on behalf of the employees of the city of Latrobe. They asked me to talk for them. By way of introduction, again, my name is Don Greiner. I'm a staff representative with the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, representing 2,000 workers in West Mormon County. A little bit about myself, I hold a degree in business administration economics, was a school director for eight years, was on municipal authority for six years, and also worked as an investigator with Commonwealth Department of Revenue. Again, the employees asked me to speak for them. What we wanted to do was speak in favor of the five-year sanitation contract. Your folks who live here and work here and pay taxes here, they care about their community. They work hard every day, and I can tell you anytime that I've walked into the transfer station, everybody's busy, everybody's doing something. So this is a topic of much discussion among them. In our discussions, it came up that the council is considering between a one-year and a five-year contract for commercial and residential sanitation pickup. And we'd like to encourage you to go with the five-year for a couple reasons. And with the background I've had in economics, we find ourselves right now in an opportune time for you to take that extended contract. While the economy is stabilizing, it is not stable enough for businesses. So they are certainly willing to afford savings to a city, borough, or township in exchange for a longer-term contract. So at this time, that is definitely in your favor. That's going to save some money for your taxpayers. Moreover, it provides you with an ability to do long-term budgeting, which again enables you to use your money more effectively. It locks in the rates for you and for your citizens, which I'm sure that all your citizens would appreciate having an idea of what their sanitation rates are going to be in the coming years. So with those things in mind, we would ask you to hopefully go for the five-year contract. Again, the benefits to you and your taxpayers are available at this time. If you go for the one-year, those same benefits may not be available. We know that, again, in a time where the economy is stabilizing but not enough, next year may bring a round of profit-taking by the companies. It may bring around of higher expenses by way of their labor costs, their repair costs, their material costs. So if you can lock that five-year in, you're definitely to an advantage. We also have talked a lot about, there was some discussion of privatizing the sanitation or the transfer station. And what we found through looking at records and the experience of your folks that work there every day, that sanitation or that transfer station is a great asset to the city of Latrobe. It's an asset that should be grown and advertised. Now, that's not me saying that. That came, excuse me, from Michelle Nestor of the consulting company Delta Development that you hired. So now, this particular asset is something that you can use and look at the probability of it and see that you can offset possible tax increases by keeping it, by keeping that money here. Moreover, my experience and my position has shown me that that popular trend of privatizing is a dying trend. There's a school district on the other end of the county here. I can't mention the name. There's possibility we'll be going into litigation, but they privatize their cafeteria operations. In the past three years, the costs have gone up exponentially in that operation. Moreover, the company who does the cafeteria work has gone back to the district to ask for money in excess of the original contract that they signed. Northern Camry Borough, a little bit smaller than Latrobe, but they were looking at privatizing their trash pickup. They found that it would be too costly to their taxpayers. They found that they would lose too much control of the operation and how the service would be provided. And they found that they would lose too much money in grants. So those are things that we would ask that you keep in mind. And also, Johnstown, city of Johnstown, it's our understanding that they are in the middle of a contract or coming to the end of a contract, looking for a new sanitation contractor because of poor service. So all these things we'd ask you to take into consideration. And again, it's a matter of, yes, saving jobs for people that work here and live here and buy here and pay here. And just as a closing thing, we took an informal poll. Nearly every one of these employees who work for this borough have said when they retire, they're staying here. So their retirement stays here. This is where they grew up. They asked me to speak because they care, and I thank you for your attention.
Jim Bolt, 225 Irving Avenue. I remember sitting in the council chamber a little over 30 years ago when the transfer station was put into existence. It was put in for a number of reasons at the time. Of course, times has changed. But one of the principal reasons was the fact that it's the only place in West Mormon County where a citizen or contractor can get rid of their trash outside of traveling the hallway to the other side of Harrison City or Scottville to a landfill. To me, that sounds like a monopoly. Monopolies are worth money. Not only that, monopolies set their own price, whether it be on a service or materials. If someone was to duplicate that transfer station today, it'd take them way over a year to get through all the red tape, get through the government agencies, government committees, until they buy the equipment, the lawyers, engineers. You're probably going to $2 million. A month ago, when I heard you opened up a bid pertaining to the pickup of residential trash, and one of the companies submitted in their bid, the bid for the transfer station, I sat back a little bit and wondered where did that come from? What happened? I didn't even know it was on agenda. But it was quickly shut down. All the bids were rejected because of some technicality, I guess, in the billing for residential customers. I went on that evening and started thinking about it. I got on my wife's computer, and I'm not very good at it, but I could find a number of sites there that people were in the discussion later on. And I also heard some stories on the street. I don't know if it's true or not. The city and the council here commissioned a study for $80,000 on what I don't know. Maybe you could be clarified. The part of that study was on the transfer station. Now, after a banner year, 2011, takes in a million dollars, all of a sudden, after over 30 years and a banner year, we have a study. Things come into question. Number one, the transfer station is a small business. You should know at the end of the year whether or not you made a profit or loss on it. You know your gross. You should know your expenditures. You should know when you close the books what you did. Also, I found out since then, the bid that was submitted for the transfer station also employs an extra merit. And that was intriguing. It sounded a little bit like maybe inside information here. Maybe somebody jumped the gun before all the ducks went wild. So your last agenda meeting, you're going to take and rebid. This time, you're going to bundle in the transfer station with your trash pickup. So I think you think you have all your pees and kews lined up. My concern now is, is there an extra queue in there, small, that may tip that bid to one company? Should a company there that I'm taking out get that bid, you award it, and someone will stand up here and tell these new reporters of their kindness and generosity, they're taking over the transfer station? Not only that, supposedly it's a liability, but they're still going to give us X number of dollars so that we can take our drivers that drive our roll-off trucks, pay their salary, and we can transfer them to the street department. Now, we can go out and we'll have extra help patching all these so-called potholes that exist in the city. I don't know. There's a lot of things, a lot of red flags from what I'm hearing on the street and what I'm seeing. And I have to ask the question, who exactly or how many of you people pertaining to all this is going to benefit from this, going to profit from this? Quite frankly, from what I'm hearing on the street and seeing, I don't like the direction and things are going here. All of a sudden, there's this great need to unload this transfer station as quickly as possible. And I can't believe that a small company that grosses $1 million a year doesn't enjoy profits. Three-quarters of a million so far this year. Be careful, things are going to start smelling here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I have a little different perspective on this here. I know that council had stated that nobody was going to lose their jobs in that there, which in essence sounds real good. I think it behooves the council to think of the taxpayers who pay the salaries of the employees and the different liabilities that I encourage regarding their salaries, their retirement costs, their health care, and everything else. If we're going to make a decision, and council, I think, has made a decision and discussed it at several meetings, I think that we have to, we elect them to do what's best for the citizens of Latrobe. And I think that we have a police contract that I don't know where that stands, but I'm sure that that's going to cost us a bundle with the liabilities and that. And I think it's time that we start conserving and saving money. And if the transferring of the transfer station means saving money, then I think that's a good idea, as much as I hate to see people lose their jobs. I don't know how the employees are going to fix roads, as he stated, okay? Most of your road contracts, they're bid out, and they're government-controlled and everything else. So it's questionable how much these employees can really do. Also, another item that I saw on the agenda here that wasn't brought up at the prep meeting was, and it was interesting, was the item under, not item C, the planning and development. And I'd like a little information about the approval and the extension or the termination of lease on the LML Quickloop, a small piece of property, whether that is a possible startup of an eminent domain process for that property for the county college or not. Thank you.
My name is Margaret Reed, and I live at 512 Birchwood Drive out in Unity Township. But I do come into Latrobe frequently, more than frequently. I have had people say to me about the parking garage, yes, it is very nice. But I spoke with the county city manager this morning and also the mayor, and said to them about people telling me, when you come down Spring Street from Ligonier Street and you're going to go into the parking garage, there is like a platform of concrete coming down to where you would exit the parking garage on that level. It is painted yellow, yes, but some handicapped people, whether it's visual handicap or just physical handicap, may not always see that. And with winter coming, we don't know what kind of winter we're going to have, and there is no railing on that piece of concrete. So that if somebody's coming down there and it is slippery, they have nothing to grab hold of. They're going to be falling into the space between the ramp to the lower level and the parking garage. Also, I asked the mayor and city manager this morning, there's two spaces right at the bottom of that parking lot. It's marked reserved. I asked them who it's reserved for. They did not know. Then you talk about wanting handicapped accessibility. Okay? You have to go up about four, five car spaces to the handicapped parking spaces, and that's all up a grade. And it is difficult for those of us who are handicapped with fractures, replacements, et cetera. I would just ask the council to have them relook at those specific things. And when you come across Spring Street from either the Eagles or the Masonic Building, some of those areas are difficult for people coming over at night. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Barbara, can I ask a question? We don't have reserved parking for over there?
The staff hasn't confirmed who it's for. We created reserved spaces and have put them for sale. So not all the reserved spaces that have been created are purchased at this time. Those may be, they may not. Sometimes what you find in the garage, a doctor, for example, might purchase a reserved space and not be there all day. So you might notice on a certain day it's not there, and you think, well, is it available or not? Call the city and find out. But unfortunately, I wasn't able to look at that record, you know, this morning because the city offices were closed for Veterans Day.
Thank you.
Committee reports, anybody here? Board and authority?
Barbara, I don't know if it falls under board and authority or committee. So Latrobe Revitalization Committee, I'd like to introduce our new Main Street manager, Latrobe Community Revitalization, hired, and his start date is today, Mr. Nick Felice, if you would stand up and introduce yourself.
Hello. Community is welcoming me. You've done a lot of great things with the revitalization program, and I hope to serve the community and the mission and see things move forward, so I'm excited about being here.
Didn't need to put you on the spot.
That's fine. That's okay. We want to know if somebody could. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Authority, park, recreation, Lucy?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to report basically to the Latrobe Municipal Authority, and in particular on the Act 537 plan. I think you all have received from the manager a preliminary discussion, which involves the removal of approximately 3,000 users of the, is it 3,000? 3,000 users from the Latrobe Municipal Authority Suits Treatment Plant. Essentially, there is a contract, a service agreement that's been executed by the city of Latrobe and the Latrobe Municipal Authority. We're sort of parties in the first part. And Unity Township Municipal Authority, the Township of Unity, the Dairy Township Municipal Authority, the Township of Dairy, and the Borough of Youngstown, and all have, as I say in politics, a dog in this fight. The removal of these 3,000 users does not necessarily mean we're going to lose 3,000 EDUs of those 3,000. Many of them could be using more than an equivalent dwelling unit, so we're going to lose a lot more income than just the 3,000. But essentially, I think that both the Unity Township Municipal Authority and the Township of Unity, they're rolling the dice here because there's going to be extreme damages to the Latrobe Municipal Authority's revenue. And those damages, at a minimum, would be about $737,000 a year. And that doesn't include depreciation, which we can expect to receive from those 3,000 customers. But not only is it a bad move, but I don't think it's a sensible move. As long as I can remember, you always try to build a Suits Treatment Plan as far downstream as you possibly could. And the problem here is that the Latrobe Municipal Authority can build whatever they want, but they have to pay for it. And you can impose on the city of Latrobe residents, our taxpayers, or Dairy Township, or even our own taxpayers, these damages, which will occur. There's no question about it. Hopefully, the DEP will not approve their plan. The plan, I don't think, makes sense because if they are going to expand, why would they ever take 4,000 of our, 3,000, and put it into their plant? That just leaves 3,000 less that they can expand with. So, Madam Mayor, I hope that when it comes time and we get the explanation of the Act 537 plan from our engineers, that this board and the city will approve it so that it can be submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosie, did you want to report on the park and rec?
I have nothing. I have nothing to report on the park and rec, but I also am the council representative, Adams Memorial Library Board, and we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, so I haven't really talked with the board members. I am sure, however, that everyone is very disappointed that Unity Township voted down the referendum to keep a library in their community. I don't even know what to say about it. It's just very disheartening that for two cents a day, we can't afford. Reading is not a priority, and that's very disappointing to me personally and I think to us as a community at large. I think every, and Richard's right, every municipality, every township, you know, we're all going to be faced with the same kind of challenges. There's only so much money and so many resources to go around. And the key, and I think if you listen to any of the state or federal politicians, regardless of what party you're on, the key to any of these surviving and thriving as a community is regionalization. And we've taken, we took some, I think, great inroads forward when we regionalized the park and rec and when we put the library in Unity Township and have the bookmobile going around Unity Township. And I think we're going backwards, and I think it's a shame that we're going in that direction. I really, I'm very disappointed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jim, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that Unity Township Municipal Authority is acting unilaterally without the agreement of the other governing bodies in their agreement, and...
That is correct. They are acting jointly, however, with the Township of Unity.
Right. But it's an authority. They're acting on their own, and I'm just under the understanding that they could not do this, they could not annex or take 30 customers from LMA, move them into UTMA without the approval of the other municipal authority.
That's my opinion.
Anybody else? Okay, we don't have, so we don't have a police chief or federal. John, Brazilian, did you wish to anything?
The only thing I want to say is I would like to take the time, thank my department for spending 26 hours during the storm, humping basements throughout the city. Guys were out a long time, a lot of them took time off work, but they did, they stayed out a lot of sleepless hours. So they was out 26 straight hours, so I'd just like to take the time to thank them for helping the community.
Thank you. Also, department, I guess that's it.
Madam Mayor? Before we go on, just to echo that, the chief has provided for you a detailed list of the alarm incidents, and you can see all of the different water-related, including water rescue and other kinds of issues related to the hurricane Sandy. And so it's a lot of work, a lot of manpower involved, as well as auxiliary and helping to keep people, to find shelter, and other kinds of issues, so just wanted to thank the department for that. But again, that's in your council report, and you can look through those details. And then related to an item that was already brought up a little bit earlier by Mr. Miller, and that is, I would ask that C1 be removed or not considered in the agenda here, and that C2 then would become the only issue under planning and development. C1 would be looked at at a later date.
Madam Mayor, I so moved. The agenda.
I second, Madam Mayor.
All favor of removing this one?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried, removing this one. I would...
to us as a community at large. I think every... And Richard's right. Every municipality, every township, every... You know, we're all going to be faced with the same kind of challenges. There's only so much money and so many resources to go around. And the key, and I think if you listen to any of the state or federal politicians, regardless of what party you're on, the key to any of these surviving and thriving as a community is regionalization. And we've taken... We took some, I think, great inroads forward when we regionalized the parking rack and when we put the library in Unity Township and have the bookmobile going around Unity Township. And I think we're going backwards, and I think it's a shame that we're going in that direction. I really... I'm very disappointed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Mr. Jim, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that Unity Township Municipal Authority is acting unilaterally without the agreement of the other governing bodies in their agreement, and...
That is correct. They are acting jointly, however, with the Township of Unity.
Right. But as an authority, they're acting on their own, and I was under the understanding that they could not do this, they could not annex or take 30 customers from LMA, move them into UTMA without the approval of the other municipal authority.
That's my opinion.
Anybody else? Okay, we don't have... So we don't have a police chief or... John, Brazil, did you wish to...
The only thing I want to say is I would like to take the time, thank my department for spending 26 hours during the storm, humping basements throughout the city. Guys were out a long time, took time off work, but they did... They stayed out a lot of sleepless hours. So they was out 26 straight hours. So I'd just like to take the time to thank them for helping the community.
Okay, thank you. Also, department, I guess that's it.
Madam Mayor, before we go on, just to echo that, the chief has provided for you a detailed list of the alarm incidents, and you can see all of the different water-related, including water rescue, and other kinds of issues related to the hurricane Sandy. And so it's a lot of work, a lot of manpower involved, as well as auxiliary and helping to keep people, to find shelter, and other kinds of issues. So just wanted to thank the department for that. But again, that's in your council report. You can look through those details. And then related to an item that was already brought up a little bit earlier by Mr. Miller, and that is, I would ask that C1 be removed or not considered in the agenda here, and that C2 then would become the only issue under planning and development. C1 would be looked at at a later date.
Madam Mayor, I'm so moved that you removed the agenda.
I second Madam Mayor.
All favor of removing this one?
Aye.
Close? Okay, motion carried, removing this one? I would...
Madam Mayor, members of council, and the items for consideration begin with Public Works Department. The first item is a motion only, and the motion reads, "I move to authorize the city manager to rebid specifications for a contract for residential waste and recycling and commercial waste."
Okay, I would like to have a five-minute executive session, please. That's all.
What's this...
Why executive session? What's the reason?
What can't be discussed on the floor, Madam Mayor?
She has the right to.
I just want to have a second session.
It doesn't have to be for matters of personnel or real estate.
It has to be for a limited number of topics, either real estate, personnel, or litigation, basically, are the three reasons we can have an executive session.
Perhaps she could... We could have the executive session, and you could decide what... After she tells you the reason for it, whether or not...
Well, if it's not going to fall into one of those three, I would hate to have this discuss something that I would have to then say, gee, this wasn't proper for an executive session. I mean, if it, I don't know, if it falls into...
Well, for one of those categories, Barbara? Yes, ma'am. Okay. So what's the...
I just thought I was able to have one.
It's not for any topic now, unfortunately.
Or fortunately.
All right, Barbara, I have a question for Barbara. Can you answer Jim's roll call? Yeah, roll call.
I think just reset for ones that are controversial. If it's just a straight...
No, straight... Are you asking about a hand vote?
Yeah, because we have just...
No, if it's anything that's not controversial or you get no nays, then you can simply vote by voice vote. But if you have ayes and nays, and they sign balanced, then you should go through a hand vote.
Barbara said she was having trouble...
Last meeting about, you know, not... Because she can't see anybody. That was part of... That's our discussion. That's all.
Can I ask...
Ms. Wolford wants to ask something.
Can I ask the city manager to elaborate on this bid, rebid specification?
Included in your bid packet, or your council meeting packet, as read by the solicitor, is a motion for the rebid. It doesn't include any specifics. Your meeting minutes from the last meeting authorized me to rebid or to bid a contract that was a rebid of the residential waste, recycling, and commercial waste contract with the addition of a transfer station. Subsequently, through a couple of email correspondence, I communicated to council my unwillingness to do that based on the fact that the number that was included in that bid related to a franchise fee for the transfer station wasn't adequate to protect the interests of this community over the five-year term. And I recommend to council that they look at it this way. We have... If you can think of a train station, we've got two trains. One is the five-year residential waste and commercial waste and five-year recycling contract, and the other's the transfer station. The idea of having a private entity operate the transfer station. That second train, call it the transfer station, is not ready to leave. It would be imprudent, in my opinion, to couple it with the other contract. My recommendation to council is to advertise for a five-year contract for residential waste and recycling services and commercial waste services to spend the next part of the oncoming year looking at the transfer station. There's just too many unknowns at this point of the viability of doing the transfer station, whether it's in the best interest to keep it in-house or not, let alone unanswered questions related to what the appropriate franchise fee, beyond the questions related to what would we be looking at? Would we be looking at a franchise fee with layoffs, a franchise fee with redeployment, and so forth? So in interest of that, I think it's in the best interest of this community to not hold the residential customers and the commercial customers hostage till we figure out what we're doing. Take advantage of the market, advertise the five-year for residential waste and recycling and commercial waste, and then if and so the transfer station makes sense to bid, bid it. If not, have a real good plan to make it grow and to keep revenue generation positive.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to rebid the specifications for a five-year contract for residual waste and recycling and commercial waste only.
Madam Mayor, I second the motion.
Mr. Bol, there? Any questions, discussion? Anybody?
Why do we have to get a five-year plan?
The five-year gives us a couple of opportunities, and one is to be able to move the single street recycling and expand our recycling opportunities for residents. Two, it will lock in a better price than what we can even if we do it for one year. When we did this in the summer, just to remind council, we had in hand a lower price, four year, five, than the current rate was, and it included the additional services of recycling. And what that means is year one, two, three, four, five of that contract were all lower than the 2011 rate for residents. So the reason that is is because of the competition within the market. If we do it one year, it's basically service the same as with an extra cost. And it gives the potential for the residents and the commercial, quite frankly, to have their rates go up, to make the transfer station franchise fee work. And what do I mean by that? The franchise fee for the transfer station needs to stand on its own. The transfer station, if it's profitable to an outsized entity to run and they can increase the tonnage, then we shouldn't see an increase of our residential and commercial rates. And there's a possibility we would see that if we coupled the two trains together.
And I also think that we really don't... A year's not going to give us enough time because one of the things I think we want to take a look at is a way to see if we can make that a more profitable cost center up there. I mean, it is really our only revenue stream, and it has made a tremendous amount of money for us over the last three years. I realize it was an anomaly of a storm, but none of us in 2010 thought that we'd still be reaping the kind of revenue in 2012 that we got in 2010 and 2011. And yes, we all expect that it's going to go down, but we just don't know. And I think we need more data. We need... And, you know, this council cannot sit here and say that if we lease the transfer station that we're not going to have to lay off employees. We will have to lay off employees. I don't think we're in a position to make any of these determinations. We don't know what we do if we can operate the public works garage out of there. We don't know if we can do that. We don't know who's going to be responsible for the DEP permit that is in the city's name if we lease it out. There are just so many unanswered questions. And we do have a police contract. We have a lot of things going on, and a year, even two years, is not a good enough opportunity for us to get a really good feel for, A, if we can do some things out there to make the transfer station more profitable, then we need to give it time to grow. And as many of the experts have told us, garbage prices are low right now, and the lowest they've been in a long time. And it just seems to me in the benefit of everybody's best interest to lock that rate in for five years because five years goes awfully fast. And before you know it, we'll be sitting here talking about this again, and it'll be five years later, so...
Thank you for letting me finish, Rosie.
Sorry, I thought you were done.
No, I was not. There is nothing in writing that says anybody is going to get laid off if we lease out their transfer station. There is... There is nothing. Nobody has talked about laying anybody off. Our goal when we talked about this, to absolute reason before we was going to do this, was to be positively that nobody up there was going to be laid off. Nobody was going to lose their job.
I was at a meeting with Michelle Nestor and Fabian and Richard, and part of the problem is, and part of the reality is, is while the consultants say that the revenue there is $30,000, $40,000 a year, they're also including in that revenue the salaries of some of the workers. So you have to find a way to pay for those salaries if you don't have that revenue coming in. That's what Michelle Nestor told us. Fabian and Richard were there. You cannot justify the same staffing levels if you get rid of the transfer station. I didn't make it up. It's the reality of the situation. Alex, you were there. Was that not what she said?
And just in my correspondence with council, my estimation of the franchise fee would at least need to be $800,000. What we had in the bid specs about a month ago, and it's still in there now, is about $300,000. The $800,000 was necessary to maintain staffing levels. And so that's where I had hesitation to put something out on the street, which I'm not sure would not result in a higher rate for residences across the board to make up that whole $800,000 franchise fee.
Michelle, not Michelle, but Delna said that we're going to be looking at laying off people anyway here with your budget issues, not just the transfer station and everything else. Does she not say that? Alex, she said that.
The reality is, and not to, you know, give Jim Bolton some credit, not that he's got a crystal ball, but I think the reality is all local governments that are boroughs or cities that are small like ours, 2.3 square miles that are fixed, are faced with tremendous fiscal challenges. We are not growing our tax base through natural means. The only way to raise revenue is through the increase of fees, fines, and permit costs or taxes, either on the earned income side in Act 511 or real estate. If we did not do that, possibly, you know, we'll have to take advantage through attrition, retirements, and so forth to reduce the expenses of the city. Apart from that, you will run into a deficit and you will have to lay people off. So either have to increase your revenues or decrease your expenditures. And the trajectory you're on now, whether it's this year or next year, would either, again, hope for retirees or attrition or lay people off.
Well, I just can't see... I just can't see getting, you know, making the decision on the transfer station coming out of the three most profitable years we've had probably in the history of the transfer station. So, I mean, so we know that there's potential revenue there, and it may be just a question of us focusing our energy on growing it so that it becomes more profitable. And we don't know that we can't do that, and that's going to take some time. And I would much rather do that because that is our only revenue stream that we have right now. Alex is absolutely right, and I'd like... And I also think if we do this for five years, we may have a situation in five years where we do have some retirements and we won't replace them. I'd much rather not replace people that retire than lay people off, especially coming out of three of the most profitable years that a transfer station's ever seen.
Well...
Look at me. I'm sorry.
No, I've just been really thinking about this a lot, and I just can't... It's been some weekend, but I just keep coming back. I go back and forth, but I think I'd like to have one-year extension. I don't want to couple with the transfer station, but be able to talk about that. You know, but I'd like to have a extension.
It's going to be cost prohibitive, Barbara. It has a...
I don't agree with you, Mrs. Rosie. I don't think it's cost prohibitive. One-year extension, everybody keeps their job, everybody is... Nobody's going to get laid off. We do the same thing we're doing now.
We're going to be in the same boat in June.
No, you're not.
Yes, you're going... Richard, we're going to be having the same argument in June because we have to... If we do a year extension, that means we've got to start talking about this in June and July because we have to put the bids out in August so we have them back by the end of December. It's crazy.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Richard is talking.
Madam Mayor, you will recall that this manager and a good portion of this council wanted to extend the contract for one year. That is what I heard. One year, I heard. In fact, I thought it was even on the agenda, was brought up several times. Now, why did it suddenly get snagged if we bid it for one year? What happened? Why was there a change of mind? So I think there's... Is some things that we can do with the transfer stations, and I think that we can find out during the year 2013, and I have some recommendations I'd like to make as far as the fees that we're charging out there to find out if we do have a viable situation, perhaps benefit the residents of the city a little bit more, and perhaps if we can see within the one year that we can't keep that, that it is the best business that we have. But right now, it's... We're not in a situation where we can even determine what the real viability of that transfer station is because of the unusualness of the last two years, and it's still going on. They're still putting on roofs.
Richard, I...
And that's where our income is coming from.
May I answer the question? The reason I supported a one-year extension at the October meeting was simply because that was the offer of our existing vendor. What you were proposing, what I heard the mayor say, was that we would be rebidding for one year. So we would go through the exercise of competitively bidding a one-year contract for our customers, and I know for a fact that the prices will be higher and we won't get any improved service. What our current vendor was offering was, was a one-year extension, no bid. And I was willing to do that. So they're entirely different, as we've discussed. And there was a concern about accepting that one-year extension related to bidding requirements for the state of Pennsylvania. So if the question is, do I support a one-year bid for a one-year contract, I do not. If it's... Could we extend under our current agreement at the same prices? Sure.
Well, the other concern I have is if... I do think, Richard, you have some good ideas because we've talked about ways to improve at the transfer station. However, I think by the time you implement those, you need to give yourself some time to see if they take hold. You know, if you want to market this transfer station, you're not going to be able to get much to happen in a year as far as marketing it and trying to grow it. And I think we miss the opportunity and at a detriment to the taxpayers if in six to nine months, when we have to bid this contract again, the tide has turned on these contracts. We know that the garbage companies are bidding low right now, and the bid that we had in the spring or early or late summer was less than what people are paying now. We've already cost our taxpayers money by not accepting that bid. So I... You know what? We probably could argue about this for another year because it's turning into the parking garage all over again. Two years, we'll be talking without a contract and a solution. But there is a motion and a second on the floor. Maybe we should just vote on it and move on.
Now, before we vote on this, I'd like to just say something to this council and the people in this chamber. Number one, you, we all, have an obligation to the taxpayers in this city to provide them the best garbage service we can at the lowest price. We're only going to get that lowest price with a five-year contract. We bid this out for five years. We bid this out for five years. In the meantime, we take a look at the transfer station in depth. We do a proper analysis. We see where we stand. We see how much we need to receive from a contractor if they should choose to operate that. We put it out the bid as a separate item. We retain all our employees if the bidder meets our reserve. It's that simple. If we need $700,000, if we need $1 million, if we need $500,000, we put that out the bid, the transfer station, we put a reserve on that. If they don't meet our reserve, then we pull back our bids. It's that simple. So let's go with the five-year contract, study this transfer station separately, put it out the bid separately, and let's get this done for the benefit of the taxpayers in this town.
Yeah, what is the hurry? Why are we in such a rush to do this, to dump the transfer station after... I don't understand.
I'm not in a hurry to dump the transfer station. I just... We talked... Did talk about giving a one-year extension.
Yeah, but we've also had time to think about the ramifications of that and try to put together a longer-term plan. It's too big of a decision to make and as a snap decision, and I kind of agree with Mr. Bolton. Something smells to me, too.
Well, I don't say anything. I don't smell anything.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
About two weeks ago, I met with Mr. Bush. I went out to the transfer station. I guess the question is this: Why are we really leasing? What is it that we are intending to lease? Do we really know? What is it that will be left for Public Works to operate from? Do we know? Basically, if the third parties are thinking that we're going to operate the entire facility out there, where does Public Works go? Where do the trucks go? Where are they stored? Where are they worked upon? You know, I began to realize that we kept focusing on that property as a transfer station and were forgetting that that's our Public Works hub, is our center. And if the third-party entities want to lease the whole area, which they may, what will it cost us then to find a replacement place for Public Works to take its facilities? In talking with Mr. Bush, I believe that the bays in the garage are pretty much utilized by the Public Works. There's little room, if any, to lease that out to some third party. I'm seeing this as something that maybe we haven't thought through. What's the cost going to be to us if we have to replace that if the third-party entity wants the whole area? And if they don't want it, are we going to have to move the scales? Who's going to bear that cost? There are a lot of questions up there.
Well, you know, I don't say a lot. So I... The whole time I've been mayor, I have never voted to get rid of anybody. So I think people should realize that I don't... And I am not in favor of getting rid of anybody, firing anybody. I don't, and I am not in favor of getting rid of anybody, firing anybody, or laying anybody off now. I, my thing is now, I would just, like we talked about, I just would like to have that one-year extension. I'm not coupling it with the transfer station.
Madam Mayor, that's, Madam Mayor, that solves nothing. One year, we're back next year, no, no. Jumping through hoops again, and going through the same verbal exercise again, and again, and again. You know what, I wanna say one thing. I know that you've talked an awful lot about how much money we made in 2010, 2011, and 2012. You don't sell something when you're losing money. You try to sell it, if you're going to sell it, when you're making money. That's just the way business is, and, and I'm not saying we're going to sell it, and I'm not saying that I would, before leasing the transfer station, I'm just saying that I think if we go one year, the way we are, that we make a few changes in, in what we take in out there, and then we take a good, hard look at it. And everybody seemed to be for the one-year extension, but all of a sudden, when you wanna bid it, you don't wanna do it, I can't understand that.
Richard, with all due respect, you don't sell a business until you've done the due diligence, and we have not done the due diligence. And all of the points that Mr. Kelly makes, we got a police contract coming up, we've got, we are, there's other things going on in the city, and we have spent all this time on this garbage contract to the detriment of the taxpayers, because they'd have paid for less, they'd be paying less already in the next contract year, and we're gonna do it again. And next year, we may not have the advantage that we have this year of, of the economy, as, as Mr. Greiner, Greiner said. It's, you don't know what the economy's gonna be like next year. Garbage contracts go up 10%. We know this year, all the experts are telling us, we're gonna get a good bid, it's gonna be at, probably lower than what they're paying now, if we go five years. I, I think it's short-sighted, I think it's not, I think it's not the right decision for the, the community, and I still don't understand what harm there is in doing what Kenny said. So, if in three years, or two years, we decide, yeah, we wanna do something with the transfer station, we do it separately, and, or we, what's the harm in that?
Just one more point, let's, let's move on. It's a buyer's market, it's time to bid this contract out for five years. We owe it to the taxpayers in this town, the residents in this town, to keep their rates as low as possible. We got good rates now, better than anybody else around, Unity Township, Dairy Township, it doesn't matter. We have low garbage rates in this town, let's keep them low, for God's sakes. And, and if you do otherwise, it's a slap in the face of the taxpayers in this town. Madam Mayor, it's my, Madam Mayor, it's my understanding that our cost did go down, that we had to pay to the garbage hauler, and I'm just wondering why we didn't lower the cost to the residents, when the cost went down, that we had to pay to the garbage hauler. I never even learned that until about two weeks ago. It's my understanding that we had to pay less to the hauler this fifth year, and yet we didn't lower the garbage rates.
We did, that's not what my records reflect, just to, to just, I think, go to the mayor, and to say it again. My initial thought was that there would be wisdom of coupling the residential contract, commercial contract, with the transfer station. I don't see that benefit at all right now. In other words, let's say a year from now, or two years from now, we decide that it's a good idea to bid out the transfer station, okay? It can stand on its own, it does not, and should not, be tied to the residential and commercial contract. That's simply what I'm saying. I'm saying you've got your one-year, or two-years, whatever it takes to think about the transfer station, but allow the residential, the recycling contract for, and the commercial waste contract to go out now. Why? Because that's the best way to ensure the lowest rates, and improve services going in the future. Now, you may find out, two years from now, for example, that if you bid the transfer station out, that the same entity who does the residential and commercial contract is the one that gives us the best figure with the transfer station, at that time, so be it. But I'm not convinced right now that putting them together 12 months from now is gonna get us, is gonna get us any wisdom, which is a better rate residential, commercial level.
I'm not convinced that we're ever gonna get rid of the transfer station, but I am convinced, Alex, that we should only go one year, the way we are, and give it a chance.
Why, Richard, why?
Well...
What, what does one year give?
Well, it gives us, gives us a good look, and I think it will show that the transfer station can make a profit. I have some other ideas about the transfer station, and one...
One has nothing to do with the other, let's keep it separate.
Well, well, okay, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. In my opinion, first of all, we are running the transfer station and selling our, our transfer station services a little bit light. I think that we have to go to a new schedule. My recommendation would be that it'd be $16 for the first 240 pounds, and then $4.50 for each 100 pounds thereafter. If you are a resident of the city of Latrobe, then, and you in fact are paying a garbage bill, then I think that you should get the first 240 pounds for $8.
It's not...
Pardon? In other words, in other words, what's happening is, I think that 90% of the people are coming in under a ton. And, really, why should the city residents that pay their garbage have to pay twice? It's the odd timers that aren't paying our $12 or $15 a month should be picking up the tab. The second thing I noticed from Michelle Nestor, she claims that the transfer station perhaps could be shut down one day a week, and hours extended on Saturday, that Saturday is a very busy day out there. And so, those would be the two or three recommendations I would like to see, and I think it'll save us all money, save the transfer station, save the jobs, regardless of what you may think. That would be a way to save the jobs, rather than to lose them.
Richard, I think those are really good ideas, they're great ideas, and I think it makes even more sense with the five-year agreement, because now we're locking in our garbage waste in a, in a down cycle, when we know that garbage is cheaper, and it gives us a longer opportunity to evaluate those things. So, I mean, again, we should just vote.
Can I just ask, when's the last time he's been at the transfer station to see anything?
Madam, I wanna tell you something, Madam Mayor. I don't go out there because we are the executive body, so to speak, that's Mr. Graziani's job. I do not make a habit of talking to the employees, because that's Mr. Graziani's job. If I wanna say anything, I say it to him, or I tell the mayor, and it's up to him to talk to you. It's not because I disrespect you, believe me, I know how hard you work out there. But that's, that's the reason I don't come out, and so to speak, poke around, and look around, and things like that.
Poke around, that's just in general.
Well, what happened, what happened before, when Sam used to do that, you guys used to come and holler Rick about him sticking his nose in there, and stuff like that. So, we put a stop to that, we said, well, no, it happened no more. Council wasn't allowed to go up there and be asking you people questions and stuff, 'cause Sam used to try to change your, he used to try to change your job assignments and everything else.
We didn't pick a ticket. Well, I think we should vote.
Anybody else? All right, before we start.
Mr. Kelly said do it by hand, vote first, and then if it's, if it's...
Do it by voice. You can do it by, the way to vote. If, if it's uncoordinated from a voice vote, then ask the mayor.
To do a hand vote. Yeah. Okay, we better voice vote. All right, all in favor of the motion?
Wait. I'm not doing it, okay, all favor the motion.
I said no.
All right, opposed?
Sorry, guys. Sorry, taxpayers.
Madam, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Never liked it, Tom.
Madam Mayor, I would like to, make a motion that we authorize direct the solicitor and the manager to prepare bid specifications for one year, and we advertise and be prepared to open bid at the December meeting, as is, as we are now, and under the same contract.
A second? Mr. Jimin Angelo? All right, do we, just voice also?
Go ahead and do a hand vote, it's all right.
All right, all in favor of Mr. Jim's motion, one year, open the vote, December meeting?
I come here with no explanation from this side. Why they think what they think.
Who's gonna pay us high garbage?
I don't know.
Is it, is that the way council works? Like, you guys have been, when you're pointing forward? And yet, I haven't heard a thing from the side of my side.
Because they don't have any excuse, because I can tell you who's gonna get the bid. You probably can tell, too.
I don't, I don't appreciate that.
I'm sorry.
I have no, I'm there, who's gonna do the bid, that's not why I'm doing it.
I, I don't, I...
And you don't know that.
All the things that, the whole things, we were going down the right path, and then all of a sudden, we found this stuff because of one, one hauler that wanted this business, that's why.
That's not, I have nothing but a hauler, that's not why I'm doing it.
Then why?
Tell us why.
Tell us why, garbage.
I already told you why, you don't wanna listen.
Explain, offer.
Tender an explanation for once.
What?
That's about enough. I explained to you, I said, I, yeah, because that's unnecessary. I told you, whenever I don't say that much, though, I say something, I wanna, I have a chance to say what I wanna say. I, it's not with the trash, I still think we just need one more, another year.
Why?
Why?
Because I feel we're leaving more time.
Or every price could be higher.
I think we can go another year, look at everything all year long. You might have a cheaper rate in the garbage, you have everything together. That's what I think.
All right, well, it is what it is, so, in for a year, and move on.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda under Public Works is a resolution. It's entitled authorizing the city engineer to apply for community development block grant allocation, retaining the search streets in the city of Latrobe, and whereas the community development block grant has allocated funds to the city for fiscal years 2012 and 2014, and whereas the city now desires a secret portion of the funds to be utilized for the 2013 street paving program within the city, and whereas in order to obtain this funding, the council desires that Gibson Thomas Engineering Company, its city engineer make application on behalf of the city to the Westmoreland Planning Department, now therefore resolve section one, that the council of the city of Latrobe authorizes Gibson Thomas Engineering Company Inc., city engineer, to prepare and submit the applications to the Westmoreland County Planning Department to utilize a portion of the city's 2012, 2014 CBVG allocation in an amount, estimated amount of $179,215, paving certain streets in the city in section two, the appropriate designated Gibson Thomas, as well as the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the receipt of a portion of the city's community development block grant allocation for the above-described project and is carried into effect within resolution. Resolving council this date, the motion will be to adopt the resolution outlined by the C.S.
Have a motion.
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Wolford, second, please.
I'll second that.
Mr. Jimin Angelo, any questions or discussion?
Alex, oh, sorry. Alex, once again, this is the paving, where they decide what areas we're gonna pay in that, right?
That is correct, this would be for income-eligible areas. For example, the 5th Ward qualifies in its entirety, and we've, in the past couple years, designated the funds in that area.
Anybody else, Barbara?
This is resolution 2012 57, Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Baldenary?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jimin Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Eric Griffin?
Yes.
The six yes.
Motion, here.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we are now in the administration of Finance Department, and the agenda reads authorize the solicitor and prepare and advertise the necessary organs to men chapter 256 relating to parking fine violations, and to set the fines. In the past, we've had two different motions, one provided by Mr. Jim, the other by Mr. Baldenary. I'm not sure which motion we are entertaining this evening, so I've set them both out from the previous meeting. There may be some additions or changes, so I would ask either Mr. Jim or Mr. Baldenary to bring this matter up, and make the appropriate motion.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion, and may I proceed it by saying that there was handed to me a petition executed by 170 individuals, and it reads, "We, the undersigned residents, business owners, and patrons of businesses in the city of Latrobe, request Latrobe City Council and Latrobe Parking Authority to lower the $10 parking fine to encourage established customers to remain loyal to businesses and invite future business to the city of Latrobe." And I had, this was done independently, and I had, I just received the call this afternoon from the lady that has a beauty shop, I think, in the plaza, right beside the garage. So, I make the following motion. I would like to recommend that the parking fine be $3 for the, if paid within the first business or working day. That it not be paid within the first business or working day, that it be $5 if paid within the fifth business or working day. And if not paid within the five days, that the fine be increased to $30. And, Madam Mayor, that's slightly different than the recommendation I made previously.
Any other second?
I'll second that.
Do you have a hand vote? Questions, discussion?
Which motion are we voting on? Yes, since you're voting on the motion.
You're voting on Mr. Jim's motion at the moment, if it passes?
What, and then what? And my motion doesn't get put forth?
Well, you can put it forth, but I would suggest, right, if it... If it passes, it would probably be difficult to get two competing motions passed by the same vote.
What was your motion?
Well, you couldn't make mine even out after.
Yeah, my motion's...
I mean, you wanna see, the easiest way, why don't you amend Mr. Jim's motion with, and then you make yours, and see if you have a second, and we'll vote on the other.
I'd like to amend Mr. Jim's motion.
Right, right. That way, we can get them both in at one time.
Second.
Okay, how are you amending it?
I'm amending it to read, as Mr. Jim's petitioner requests, that the fines be less than $10. I propose that if paid within the first business day after the date that the citation is issued, the fine be $5. If paid within three business days, it's $10. And if paid after the third business day from the date of the issuance of the citation, it's $30. I think the biggest thing that we have to take into consideration is...
Can we get a second?
Yeah, Ms. Wolford, second.
I'll second it.
No.
We need compliance. The only way we're gonna get compliance with the parking is if the fines are such that people are willing to put money, or pay panga, to park. It's that simple. If we keep the fines at $3, we'll have compliances we have, which is zilch.
Uh, any discussion on Mr. Baldenary's?
Now, what we would be voting on then would be the amendment first, which would be Mr. Baldenary's motion, which I have written down here.
Okay. Do you wanna read, do you want me to read it?
Uh, the motion to amend would be $5 if paid within the first business day, that's the same as Mr. Jim.
No, no, no. It's $3.
Oh, $3, I apologize, it says $5. If paid within three business days, it would be $10, and if paid after the third business day, it would be $30. That's the amendment.
Did you make it for me to ask a question, Ken? Is it, could, would it be possible not to have the $30 for your...
No.
Just a question.
No.
Okay, I wonder if you could go like 5, 10, 12, whatever. Okay, that's all I'm looking at.
It'd probably be easiest just to do a roll call vote on the amendment, this is Mr. Baldenary's amendment, yes. All right, I'm sorry, hand, I'm sorry, hand vote.
All right, hand vote on Mr. Baldenary, this is the amendment, in favor of Mr. Baldenary's amendment. Hand it.
In favor?
In favor, right.
In favor of Mr. Baldenary's amendment. No, there were four.
Kenny raised it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't count myself.
So, the motion, in effect, of Mr. Jim has now been amended, and I hate to say, we have to vote again, we're gonna vote on the amended motion, which would be in effect Mr. Baldenary's motion.
motion. What you voted on is amended. Now we have to vote on the motion, which is basically his motion. Okay?
Wait, what?
We voted to amend Mr. Jim's motion. That's what we just voted on.
Okay, now we have to vote on the actual...
On Mr. Jim's motion as amended, which in effect is Mr. Baldmarry's motion. It sounds absurd, but that's what we have to do.
So, we vote, if you vote negative, which probably I would do, that means that we have defeated the 5, 10, and 30, and we're back to the 3, 5, and 30.
Only if the majority votes that way. In other words, if the same four vote for the motion that you made as amended, they're voting for Mr. Baldmarry's motion. Which would be then a 4 to 2 vote, so it would pass.
So, you have to vote on the amendment now?
No, we've already voted on the amendment. We're voting on your motion as amended, which is in effect Mr. Baldmarry's motion. Same motion. Is this a roll call? Hand vote. Still motion, okay. Now, all in favor. Basically, we're doing a roll, I thought it was a roll call. It's the same motion as you just voted on before. Hand vote. Okay, all in favor. Okay. And against? Against. Two. Okay. Two against, okay. Now it's passed. So, this is one that passed.
Just so you know, then our solicitor will be advertising that as amended to your ordinance for the December meeting.
And then you'll have to go through this again, vote on the...
I think Mr. Baldmarry's motion was business day, so like, you get a ticket on a Friday. I'm asking him if he can explain it. It doesn't have to be paid on Monday. Is that correct? And if you got it on the last, no, just a moment, just a moment, please. If you got a ticket on a Friday and today is a holiday, would you then not have to pay it till Tuesday?
Correct. That's how we'll read, the first business day.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, could you read that all over again? Peggy, she's, she's looking for you.
You wanna know what?
Okay.
You're okay now?
Redundant, let me say it.
It was redundant.
Stupid, and it's redundant. Thank you. Why not just get those scofflaws right off the bat and make them pay? You have the license numbers?
I agree with you. I think that the question is more important, not hiring fines. I think you can have, you can have multiple fines on the same day if you stay over the time. And I think it would catch the scofflaws.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Okay, the next item on the agenda under administration of finance is a resolution. It is entitled authorizing disposition of public records set forth on attached schedules for disposition of the records of office. Department of the city of Latrobe, whereas, by resolution 20135 adopted July 9, 2001, the city declared its intent to follow the schedules and procedures for disposition of public municipal records as set forth in the municipal records manual. And whereas, in accordance with Act 428 of 1968, each individual act of disposition of public records shall be approved by resolution of the governing body, now therefore be resolved, section one. The council of the city of Latrobe, in accordance with the above cited municipal records manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of the public municipal records set forth on exhibit A attached here too. Section two, that the city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer being or hereby authorized and directed to carry out the disposition of public municipal records set forth on the attached schedule A and carry into effect it within resolution. Section three, that this resolution shall become effective immediately. Section four, that any and all other resolutions inconsistent here with or hereby repealed, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
Still move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldmarry, second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, any questions or discussion? Okay, Bart?
This is resolution 2012-58. Mr. Jiminangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
There's six yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Good, Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item under the administration of finance department is also a resolution. It's entitled exoneration of the 2012 city real estate taxes for parcel acquired by St. Stevens AME Church. And whereas, St. Stevens AME Church has imparted parcel of land situated in Oak Street for the relocation and operation of the church facility. And whereas, the parcel of land was granted tax exempt status for the fiscal year 2013. And whereas, parcel of land was acquired by the church in fiscal year 2011, and real estate taxes are owed upon the parcel of land for the fiscal year 2012. Whereas, St. Stevens AME Church requests the city of Latrobe exonerate the real estate tax due and owing upon said parcel of land. And the city of Latrobe believes it would be in the best interest of the city to assist St. Stevens Church in this endeavor, now therefore be resolved, section one. That the city of Latrobe hereby exonerates the real estate property tax for the fiscal year 2012 for a parcel of land situated in 19 Oak Street. Latrobe, Westmoreland County, Pennsylvania, bearing map number 1503050235. Section two, the city secretary is authorized, directed to provide a certified copy of this resolution to the church and to any other taxing body requesting a certified copy of the same resolved in council this date. If council recalls, the church was moved, and it's the new location that it is seeking an exoneration for.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I still move.
Mr. Baldmarry, second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Jim, any questions or discussion? Okay.
This is resolution 2012-59. Mr. Baldmarry? Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Is that a yes vote?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Jim has distracted me.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jiminangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
There's six yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we're now in planning and development, and we're on seat two. And that is a simple motion. And the motion is to authorize the solicitor to prepare an amendment for the zoning ordinance to comply with the provisions of stated Act 147, the Surface Mining Conservation Reclamation Act and Act 13. In effect, I believe council is aware that Act 13 has been challenged by various municipalities in southwestern PA. It has gone through the Commonwealth Court, is now in the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. However, in order to bring us into compliance until the Supreme Court makes its decision, I will make a simple amendment to the zoning ordinance that will say we will comply with all state acts in terms of asset recovery from the ground until such time as the courts have decided otherwise. So, that will be prepared for the next meeting for December.
May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Wolford, second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Jiminangelo, any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, thank you. I have a proclamation honoring and recognizing Ron Wymer, and I wanna know, Mrs. Wolford would read it, because she's worked with him for so long, and I would appreciate it. Ron, is it you?
Can you come on over here, Mr. Wymer? This is a proclamation honoring and recognizing Ronald W. Wymer. Whereas, Ronald W. Wymer has admirably served the city of Latrobe as a member and chairperson of the Latrobe Planning Commission, chairperson of the Latrobe Community Revitalization Program, and involvement with Home Build Hope. As such, his efforts have resulted in improved housing opportunities on Lloyd Avenue, train station upgrades, and obtaining grants from the Lincoln Highway Quarter and Pittsburgh Port Commission. He also participated in projects to obtain a police K-9 unit, upgrading the city's comprehensive plan, and aiding national church residents with the construction of the Laurel Highlands Village. And whereas, Mr. Wymer has worked diligently to cause the city of Latrobe to grow and become more sustainable and vibrant. And through his tireless efforts, has been a trailblazer with regard to revitalization and community growth. Mr. Wymer's commitment to these ideals is a testament to his talents, abilities, and character, which was evident to all that have had the pleasure of working with him. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the city of Latrobe for themselves, and on behalf of our entire community, hereby recognize, honor, and commend Ronald W. Wymer for his commitment and ambition in a lifetime of volunteerism to make our fair city a better place to live for his fellow residents. We extend our heartfelt thanks to Ronald W. Wymer and his family for his unceasing dedication and leadership. As started by media broadcaster Donald H., as stated by media broadcaster Donald H. McGannan, "Leadership is action, not position." Regardless of his position, Mr. Wymer's leadership through action was always an inspiration to others. We wish good health and happiness to Mr. Wymer and his family for future years to come. This proclamation is issued under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this eighth day of October. What day is it? This 12th day of November. Congratulations, Ron.
I'd like to say that this is a great city, and there's great people here. Everybody I work with, especially the volunteers, they just do everything on their own. It's really great, and I sure do miss everybody, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wolford, for reading that.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
I knew you could read so.
Wow, thanks. Even though you weren't my teacher, you knew I could.
Well, I just appreciate it. You work so...
Ron and I go back a long way, and it's Latrobe Steel Day.
Right, so I...
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I wanted you to read it. Not that I didn't care, but thank you. Thanks, Ron.
Madam Mayor, members of council, there is one more business item, and it also falls under the business. It is simply a motion. In most reads, I move we authorize the city secretary to advertise for the appointment to positions on city boards, authorities, and commissions, something we do every, at this time of year.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jiminangelo, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, all in favor? Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, under unfinished business, I'd like to ask the city manager and our solicitor what the status of the crosswalks.
I spoke with Mr. Nichols today. I've got his schedule. I'm gonna try to schedule a meeting toward the end of this week, or early prior next week. So, I need to know, after the meeting, I'll ask members of council when they would be available, if they were to attend that meeting.
Be nice. Go to other cities, and that's real nice.
I know.
Okay, anybody, any difference? Alex?
Madam Mayor, I have submitted the manager's report to you for your review, and of course, I'm available for questions. Just some overview of the report related to the budget. We're expected this year to take in revenue more than we budgeted, to about $43,000 is what we're expecting over the 2012 general fund budget. On the expenditure side, we have spent about $32,000 less than we had budgeted. So, the net is about $70,000 some thousand dollars as far as the year-end addition to the general fund balance. As noted, I guess, in passing, a lot of that is the result of the transfer station revenues. It's projected that the transfer station revenues will top out at over $900,000. Last year, it was over $1 million. And this year, it should top out over $900,000. So, again, that paid up a lot of the difference. Over the last three years, or this year, last year, and the projected next year, the net at the transfer stations, about averaging about $260,000. This year, it's, looks like it could clear $250,000. Last year, it cleared about $373,000. So, it just gives you an idea of how important it's been to us over the last couple of years. And quite frankly, has a lot to do with next year's budget. Related to next year's budget, the draft I presented to council needs a lot of work. It's a budget right now that is showing, without any tax increase or any increase to fines, about a 1% decrease in expenditures, and a little less of a decrease on, I mean, I'm sorry, a little less than 1% on income, and even lesser amount on expenditures. Right now, the draft budget that I presented to you has about a $30,000 gap in it. So, I anticipate working with council to close that gap. It's quite easy, to be honest with you, to estimate higher revenues. And I can assure you that these revenues are about as low as you can estimate. So, you know, it could, for example, the transfer station, we might have a couple percentage points higher, and it would erase that $30,000 gap. There's a lot of work to be done between now and the November meeting, and then, of course, the December meeting, where I anticipate council will be adopting the 2013 budget. Going on into the future, again, these budgets will not get any easier. As Richard Jim has made mention many meetings, we have to be very, very judicious, and really have harder decisions ahead of us than what we've had behind us.
Madam Mayor, I wonder if the manager would take into consideration some of the comments I made concerning charges at the transfer station, and in particular, giving the local residents a break.
Yes, sir. What we've done, thanks...
My comment was that I'd like the manager to look into the comments I previously made concerning the charges at the transfer station, and particular, particularly in reference to giving the residents a break on the charge that they have to pay when they go across the station.
Richard?
Probably not.
Counsel member Jim, I'm working with the department heads, and we have a package of rate and fee changes and structures. So, again, those aren't being presented to you as it relates to the revenue projections. The revenue projections are the as-is rates that we have now. And we're working at, what would it look like if, for example, we changed the $8 minimum fee for the 200 pound over the scales to 14 or whatever dollars. So, you know, looking at some of those, and taking into consideration discounts for residents as well. So, thank you. We will be doing that.
And just for the record, look, I wouldn't have a problem if you guys would make an argument, like, with facts, as to what the rationale is behind your decision-making. That's the thing that frustrates me the most. You vote, but you won't tell us why you're voting that way. I mean, try to convince me. Give me some facts, and try to convince me that I should vote with you. Penny and I sit here, and Richard, I guess, Richard did try to convince me to vote with him on a couple things, but it's becoming a, that side of the room against this side of the room. We sit here and try and convince you, and you guys just sit there and vote, and you won't, help me understand your position if you want me to change my vote.
Rosie, I have most of the facts here, right here. I hope to have them done for council for this meeting tonight. I had a family emergency, I had to run out of state, or I would've had it done. I will have it for you by the next agenda meeting. And if I am wrong, I will change my vote completely. But so far, by the facts I am gathering up, the transfer station does not make no money. It does not make enough to come...
But let me ask you, Richard, where are you getting, where are you getting your facts? I'm just asking. Where are you getting them?
I do my homework, all the paperwork I get here from council, everything comes in my mailbox, is where I get my homework from.
And you think that's a clear picture of everything?
Well, it better be. It's right in black and white here, that's right where we're handed to.
There's a lot more involved in things than just a piece of paper, so, I'm just saying. Just, I mean, we can all look at those numbers, but there's other factors that are... that are included in that. And have you sat down with Alex?
You're telling me these numbers are wrong, that we get them?
No.
That's what you're telling me right now?
No, I'm not telling you that.
It's on paper, and the numbers better be right, had they not?
I'm not telling you those numbers are wrong, I'm telling you there may be more information than just what you have in front of you.
Oh, yes, there is. There is the overtime, there is the salaries, there is the.
But yet, you still think that we can get rid of the transfer station and maintain the level of employment that we have?
I'm not saying it's a positive deal, I'm thinking it's something we need to look in really hard, we're generating, maybe to go from $27,000 year clear profit to maybe $200, $250,000 clear profit?
Do, are the salaries of the transfer station people in your numbers?
Yes.
The whole percentage, or just part of it?
No, everything. Overtime, everything, their benefits, everything in it, everything that contains that sanitation department is all I have right here in front of me.
And if you. Isn't that, Alex, isn't that what Michelle has done for us?
From the years 2006 to 2010, the transfer station averaged about a $30-plus thousand net, if you want to call it profit, it's the net of revenue over expenditures. And within that, the expenditures included the part of the director's salary, part of public works salary, part of our mechanic's salary, and as well as a number of other things related to electricity and cost to the transfer station. My concern was, if you back out those expenditures that, quite frankly, are taken care of by the revenue generated at the transfer station, that's where you, you look at that $30,000 just as it's a simple pure net, and it's not, it's a little bit more complex than that. You have to add in those salaries and some of these other costs that we wouldn't be losing unless we laid off staff. And that's where you start to get into, it's got to be a $400, $500,000 exercise. Now, again, that was 2006 to 2010. For the fiscal years 2012, or 2011, 2012, projected, and projected 2013, the transfer station net difference between revenue and expenditures is 260,000. So again, according to context, it's about $30,000 some thousand for those years leading up to the storm. Post-storm, it's been averaging, you know, again, it looks like at an average of 260. But again, the benefit is that some public works people, the director, and other folks, like the mechanics, parts of their salaries are paid by those revenues. So you just can't look at the simple net and say, okay, I'll go after the net, you know, I'm going to have to give that. So if you look at those three years, put it in the context, it's 260 plus those expenses, you're looking at, again, an $800,000 to $900,000 franchise fee. Now, don't get me wrong, if the private sector says, hey, we'll give you a million and we'll do revenue share, it's something to look at. But I'm not so sure they're going to be willing to do this. The margins in the waste industry are very tight. In other words, for profit and loss is close. That's why it's nickel and diamond on these kind of bids, so I don't anticipate they're going to just.
So the, so if they're going to pay us a franchise fee, that's going to be passed on to their, to the taxpayers. And the people, well, somebody's got to pay it. They're not going to lose money with the contract.
You know, we have, this should have all been talked about.
I know, I know, Barbara. Are you?
I move for adjournment.
Well, no, not yet. Well, you can, but I would like to say.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that stuff, thank you.
It just ain't something I'm blowing out my butt.
Why not? Why not? I understand you. I just want to have my report. I have two things about thankfulness that.
Thankful for the, when we had our Halloween parade and the trick-or-treating, and I want to thank all the firemen of our police, our regular police officers, you know, they, I saw them all, type, up and down my street. So I appreciate that a lot. And I'm still, well, next year, still going to have it go from 4 to 6. And also, secondly, and John just brought up about flooding and everything with Hurricane Sandy, and I know those firefighters worked hard, and I appreciate that, so. We took care of the other ones wrong, so I'm done.
Thank you. Now that you're speaking out, I'm sorry, Jen.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried.